And Commissioner McCoy.
Here.
Let's go to the quorum.
Mr. McCoy, would you mind standing and leading us into the Fledge Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Good job, Mr. McCoy.
Approval of minutes, the regular meeting minutes of September 11, 2018.
Move to approve as submitted.
Second it.
All right, a motion has been made, and motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Carried. All right, item number two, consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time pursuant to ARS 38-431. All righty, no public comments at this time. Item number three, old business. Sylvia?
I'm opposing the quorum.
Oh. Oh.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Richard's gonna be the... Let me read it off.
Yes, please.
Okay, conditional use permit KCUP 18-0003, a request from Jed Noble Civil Works Engineering applicant from Kingman Mobile Home Park LLC, CEO Jack V. Klein, property owner, for a conditional use permit to allow recreational vehicles within the Qing Jing Mobile Home Park. The conditional use permit is requested to allow 24 of 69 park spaces to be occupied by recreational vehicles with the remainder of the spaces for manufactured homes. The subject property is located at 3375 North Fairfax Street and is zone RMH6, residential manufactured home, 6,000 square foot lot minimum. The property is further described as a portion of the north half northwest corridor, southeast corridor, section 12, T 21 North, R 17 West of the G and SRM Mojave County, Arizona.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. This is an old business item that's carried over from last month, which you tabled. So I won't hit every single slide here, but I'll try to hit the highlights for the benefit of anyone that was at the last meeting. This is a conditional use permit application, and the request is to allow 24 of 69 park spaces within the Qing Jing Mobile Home Park to be occupied with recreational vehicles. And there'd be certain conditions under which that would be allowed. It's located at 3375 North Fairfax Street. This is the location of the Mobile Home Park. This is just our zoning map. It's at the southwest corner of Sycamore and Fairfax. This is an aerial view of the site. We did post the site on two different occasions, prior to the last meeting and then prior to this meeting. There were public notices published in the Kingman Daily Miner. We did notify all property owners with 150 feet. And as requested by the Commission, we did provide the park manager copies of letters that they then distributed to their residents to... So they were provided notice of this request as well. We did receive one letter opposing the CUP that was from a property owner outside of the park, and that was prior to the last meeting. We received no other comments between the last meeting and this meeting from anyone, including park residents. Currently, the park has 42 spaces. They're occupied by manufactured homes or mobile homes, and there's seven occupied by RVs. We're not exactly clear of the history of the RVs. However, under the zoning ordinance, in order to allow CUPs on the expanded spaces, that requires the CUP. And they can have up to 40% of the park spaces to be utilized by RVs. So that's really the request tonight before you... It's a little hard to read on this map, but this map does show the spaces that would be devoted to manufactured homes, as well as the ones for RVs. I won't go through all this part. This is just basically the standards they would have to meet, and we've determined that the plan that they provided doesn't meet their requirements. Also, the applicable regulations and required findings that you have to make on each of these CUPs, we kind of went through that last time. Basically, it does appear to meet all applicable regulations, the bulk regulations. Traffic patterns don't seem to be that they would be radically altered if this change occurred. Landscaping, the sites are re-landscaped. There is fencing on all sides of the property, so additional fencing would not be required. And it doesn't appear that it would provide or create a nuisance for any surrounding properties. So staff's recommendation is the same as it was last month, to recommend approval with the following conditions. One is that the recreation vehicles as defined by the City of Kingman would be permitted only on the spaces marked RV on the site plan that was submitted with the request. And that each RV space shall be provided a paved or gravel parking space, which is a requirement of the zoning ordinance. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions you may have. Mr. Noble, the engineer is also here this evening, as well as the park manager.
I think we tabled it mainly because we had felt that people that are currently occupying that park were not notified based on some information we had this last round. Can you say that they have all been notified at this time?
That's my understanding. We provided a letter to the park manager, and then they distributed the letters.
Okay.
I guess thank you, Richard.
Okay.
Before I open it up to the general public, is applicant, I'm here in the room. Is there any questions we have of the applicant? Again, we were hoping that property owner was gonna...
The park manager's here.
Well, the park manager is here too?
Yeah.
Okay.
How was the... How were the letters given to the occupants? I was just wondering. And what was it?
It was courtesy notice that Rich put together, and I believe John, he's the park manager, hand-delivered it to each resident.
Well, I guess that's something we should ask them, because we just have, as far as we know, is all we've heard so far. So how would... I mean, as far as we know, is the park manager able to come up with you?
I believe we had questions from...
One or two, yeah.
Please state your name, sir.
John Corradini, manager Qing Jing Mobile Home Park.
So, yeah, I was just wondering, so you hand-delivered these letters?
I hand-delivered myself.
And did the letter give them an opportunity to... Was the letter an opportunity to state, you know, their opposition or their... or anything? Or was it just saying it's gonna be rezoned? I was just wondering, like, do they know that they're looking for their opinion on... or no?
Well, it's whatever...
Because I hadn't seen it.
Whatever Rich wrote in the letter.
It's just our standard notice, right?
This is standard notice, Richard?
Yes, I just modified it slightly, but it's the same type of letter we sent out to property owners. It gives them the time and date of the meeting, an opportunity to email me or, you know, to call me or whatever, to voice their opinions. And like I said, I didn't hear from anybody.
Okay. Thank you, Rich.
Any further questions with...
I have one for the...
And the property owner?
We had a concern about how long or short a stay the RVs would be there, and he couldn't answer that for us, so could you enlighten us?
Yes, we're looking for permanent people. We would do a background check on them. When someone comes in, there's no electricity or gas available, so we can't just take anybody in. They have to apply to Unisource for service. So it takes time. We do background checks. So it's not like an overnight thing. It would never be that.
So this is not a short-term project?
Absolutely, absolutely not.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open it up to the public. Any comments from the public? I see none. Sir, would you please step forward and state your name?
My name is Tom Rusher, and I've been in the park for about three years now, and I'm 200% behind this, definitely. It... In fact, actually, when the sign was posted for the... for this meeting and for... I was really scared because I thought that the owners were gonna sell the park and we were gonna get notices to leave. And it's really nice to see this happen to bring up more income into the park, basically.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? All right, I'm gonna close it. Okay. Any comments?
The reason we tabled this was basically to give the homeowners, we were under the understanding, there was several that could not get out of their residence easily, maybe missed the notice. So this gave them an opportunity to know what was happening in their own surroundings. So with Rich following through, thank you for doing that. I'm gonna put a motion that we go ahead and approve this.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion. I have a second. It's been made. Any further questions? Row call vote, please.
Commissioner DeVries is a yes. Chair Fredrickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Goss?
Yes.
Commissioner Hansickur is a yes. Commissioner Keith?
Yes.
Commissioner McCoy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All righty, new business. Item A, zoning ordinance text amendment Z 018-0009. A city initiated request for a text amendment to section 5.300 manufactured home subdivisions of the zoning ordinance of the City of Kingman to allow manufactured homes on lots or parcels a minimum of 5,000 square feet in subdivisions recorded prior to January 1, 1945 in zone RMH6, residential manufactured home, 6,000 square foot lot minimum.
Good. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, this is a text amendment that we discussed at the last meeting as a discussion item. This is the public hearing for the amendment. I would amend section 5.300 to allow manufactured homes and lots or parcels that are a minimum of 5,000 square feet in subdivisions that were reported prior to 1945 and are also zoned RMH6. Staff is recommending approval of the text amendment that's at the end of the presentation here. Just sort of, again, fill in the facts here. Currently, the minimum billable site in the RMH zoning district is 6,000 square feet. However, there's an exception that allows single-family detached homes to be in lots as small as 5,000 square feet if they're in areas that were platted with subdivisions prior to 1945. The definition of a single-family detached home, however, does not include manufactured homes. And so that means manufactured homes are not included in that exception, and that's... What's before you tonight to consider whether you want to include them in that exception. So we discussed this in August and September. At the last meeting, you initiated the text amendment. This is really spurred by someone who has been redeveloping several lots in the south side area over the years and has been citing some new manufactured homes. This area was mostly subdivided before 1945. It does create a... contain a variety of lots sizes, including lots that were subdivided into 25 by 100-foot lots originally. We reviewed and determined that there's about 40 vacant parcels in the area that are less than 6,000 square feet that are adjacent to improved roads and utilities and potentially could be developed with manufactured homes or site-built homes. The infrastructure in the area is being upgraded as needed, including replacements of water and sewer lines. There was some concern by the Commission over the conditions of the utilities in that area. But really, if we were to approve this, there really would be no greater impact on the infrastructure than if this was... If they were site-built homes being placed on these lots. And also, the Kingman general plan does support downtown infill development. This is the zoning map of the area that would be affected. All the areas in the light blue are zone RMH6. So you can see that's much of the area south of the tracks. This is just the aerial and utility map showing water and sewer lines in the area. You can see much of the area served by water and sewer. So staff's recommendation is to... Or the... I'm sorry, the decision options are to either approve the text amendment shown in attachment A. Two would be to recommend approval with any changes recommended by the Commission, or three, to recommend no changes at this time. Staff is recommending approval of attachment A, and this is a very simple text amendment. All that would be changing is that in the sentence you see below there, let's see what it says, at the fourth line down, where it starts with four, "single-family detached home only." The word "home only" would be struck, and then we would add the words "dwelling" or "manufactured home." So that would add manufactured homes as a use that can be put on 5,000 square foot lots in the RMH district in older subdivisions. And with that, I'll try and answer any questions you have.
I know we've... This has been ongoing. I don't know if we ever asked, do we know how many 25 by 100 lots and 50 by 100 lots?
Well, the number of 25 by 100 foot lots are quite numerous, but you would have to have at least two combined into a single parcel to have a buildable site. And I had determined that there were about 40 in between that range between 5,000 and 6,000 feet, yeah.
So combining those, we can get to 40 then?
Right, yeah. In most of the cases, these are already combined parcels, yeah.
Any further questions, Richard? Thank you, Richard.
Thanks.
I'll open this up to the general public. If anybody got any comments, please step forward and state your name.
Good evening, Commissioners. Could I ask you to pull your microphone, because you sure not can't hear you in the back? Thank you. All right. My question is, if they're 25 feet wide, how big is the house that can be sit on it?
As stated, the two lots would be combined to get to the 5,000.
Okay. Have any of you been to Catalina Island?
Yeah, yes.
I just came from there, and, of course, they have no cars and stuff like that. Everybody drives golf carts. And the homes are like that far apart from each other, you know, on the lot, and they go two stories up and stuff. And so I was thinking about those homes on Catalina last week when I was there. And could these people build two-story homes in... on these lots?
Well, I think this particular... Yeah, you can. But he's not talking... I think he's talking about just rezoning it so that you could...
Right, but I'm just wondering in the future...
On a 50 by 100, 25 by 100?
Yeah.
Are you talking about the 50 by 100s?
Well, if they got a 25, you know, they didn't want to combine them.
The minimum is a 5,000 square foot lot.
Okay. All right. That was my only question. I was just wondering if we were gonna have homes packed into each other so that...
As I understand it, there's still lot requirement setbacks.
Right. That's what I was wondering. Okay. So because you'd have a 17-foot wide house, and you'd have to go two or three stories to get...
Well, I think also, just for clarification, that was only for the tiny homes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. So there is a square foot minimum, maximum and minimum on the tiny homes.
Okay. I was just wondering. Thank you.
Any further questions from the public? Please step forward and state your name.
Hello, my name's Gary Waters, a Kingman resident. I'm against this, and the reason why is I don't think it's wise to put more trailers into downtown, especially ones in the south-facing side of the town, which are on a hill, which could be visible from our tourist area. Downtown Kingman has something special in that most of the growth stopped downtown, you know, when it hit Radar Hill right around the time of World War II. And then the growth that took place after it included some of the architecture that's not quite as historic. For instance, say, the trailers and things like that. So we're lucky in that our historic area doesn't have trailer parks interlaced in it quite so much as other towns. I'm a little concerned that, you know, visibly putting these on a hill downtown is gonna hurt our tourism. And not only that, you're not gonna be able to get rid of it later on once you establish it. Now, I've heard the argument that these people own these parcels and they pay taxes on them. But the fact is, is that the taxes are based on the market value, you know, based on sales in the area. So they have been paying lower taxes based on, you know, what they can use that property for a long time. So they bought the property, inherited it, you know, they bought it knowing that the value was gonna be lower. So just, I would ask the city to please consider the tourism and the great things that are happening downtown, and what would happen if we just put a trailer park up on the hill?
Well, I think we're not... We're talking two different things. We're talking manufactured homes that have to be on a slab, not a trailer brought in and put on the space. These are manufactured homes.
Yeah, and there's still aesthetic concerns with them, and you can still tell at a look whether or not a house was built in 1930s or it was built in a factory, you know, last week and shipped over here on wheels with turn signals on. So just humbly, I'm asking you guys to please consider what's happening downtown, what's gonna happen if you start flooding downtown with trailers. Now, I am, just for the record, I am for the tiny home, you know, initiatives that are going forward. Not with shipping containers or whatever some people are proposing. But if we want to use those lots for tiny homes, that might be a good idea and something we can consider. But right now is the time to make the choice whether we want downtown to be a trailer park or not, and I think you guys should think about that.
Sir, can I ask you a question? Give me your view. So your concern on the hill is from a tourist... From what view standpoint is it that you think you see those?
Sure. If you go into downtown Williams, everybody says it's a great city. However, I've heard many people complain about the trailer park. It's front and center, right in the front of the town. They can never get rid of it. They have a trailer park there like a kinkersaw right on their face. Can't get rid of it ever. Now, if we're gonna allow that hill, just pull up that slide or whatever, and look at that hill and imagine trailers dotting it, what are you gonna do when you don't want that there anymore? I mean, or will that infect our tourism? Just please try and consider it from the view of somebody coming from outside of, you know, Mojave County. And plus, maybe we don't want anything down there. I hate to say it, you guys are pretty big on growth. At the same time, a hill might look better than trailers, you know, in some cases. We're blessed down here in having architecture that's historic that can never be replicated again, you know? So just think about it. That's all I ask.
Thank you.
Any further comments from the public? All right, so close it. Have a discussion.
Oh, discussion, yeah. Okay, well, I'm just gonna give my view. I appreciate Gary's comments and everything Rich has done. My view is that it's... I'm not for it, and this is why, as Gary was sharing, that we're trying to improve. We spent $250,000 on a welcome to Kingman. And then what's gonna happen is that when you... With the cost to bring a manufactured home in new is very... It's much more expensive. It's more expensive than to build a home. So nobody's gonna be bringing new manufactured homes in over there. They're gonna bring repos. The only way you can make it work is repos, and you can't get loans when they've been moved twice. It's very difficult, and three times, you're done. And in fact, we have to do full disclosures on the MLS, saying no financing available. So what you're gonna have down there is someone bringing in repos, cheap homes, sitting them on a lot, and you're gonna have a rental, and it's gonna get bad. Rentals, we've seen, do not have a care typically, on a typical basis, that you do for a homeownership. So you're gonna get, in my opinion, slum. And you can still do that on the 60. I know you can do that, but combining a bunch of repos is, in my opinion, gonna make downtown look worse. And it's already stigmatized, that side of the tracks or this side of the tracks. Are you on the south side? It's got a stigmatization that people gotta get over, and it's gotta get better. And I believe that's the part of the city to help make that happen. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I think Gary, appreciate your opinion as well. Definitely something to think about there. I have to be honest, I don't go over to Henderson a lot and Vegas a lot for work travel. I don't think I ever look over that way, honestly. When I come downtown, I look to the right when I'm going that way. And even I just came back from Henderson, I never looked that way. I never looked to the right. I looked to the left to see what's going on on the front street and everything, so I don't... It never draws my eyes over that way. And I'm trying to think, the first time when we came here a couple of years ago, I don't even think we looked that way off the time, more the draw was. I appreciate what you're saying, but it's like a bowl. That topography over there is like a bowl on the lower side. Maybe as you get closer down towards the Fireman's Park, you get a little more of an upslope to it. But I think, because we even hike from Slaughterhouse Canyon sometimes. My wife teaches at Lee Williams High School, and we'll walk from Walpied Mountain Road and hike through the canyon down there. And even then, when I walk through it, there's enough landscaping, vegetation, trees, brush, whatever the case may be. It's not like... It's not like a wide-open piece of desert sitting over there. So I do... I'm not fully discounting what you're saying. It's absolutely a concern. But I don't know that it's something that actually draws vision over that way. Makes me think about, though, the... On the map that Rich had up there too. I guess maybe I didn't fully consider scoping and layout and how far up it may go. So I think maybe that's something to think about a little bit more. But again, in the bowl area, the bowl flatter area, no, I'm not. I would be in favor of it there. I don't think that it changes anything from that standpoint. But maybe thinking about a little further up, maybe that is something to take into consideration. Just not something I personally look over that way much, but that's a fair point to think about.
I think this is one of those topics that, when it first came to the table, I'll admit, I'm the one who sent Rich running back to get me some more information on the water and sewer and the amenities that go through that area. And at the time, I asked Rich about this all being already zoned and fitting into the criteria of the tiny homes, and I believe the answer was yes to that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. With that said, I think we've already kind of established the tiny home criteria and what they can do. And this opens that area up to those tiny homes, and adding one more filter to this, I'm not in favor of it. I think we are setting a standard for our tiny homes, and this is a nice area that those can start as being established and develop into what we see as the future of our community, so.
If I could just add just one little point of... Is that this area is zoned for manufactured homes. Manufactured homes or site-built homes, including tiny homes, are all permitted in this district. The question is just whether or not you will allow... in this, in this district. The question is just whether or not you allow the manufactured homes on the smaller-sized 5,000-square-foot lots, or whether they're relegated to the slightly larger 6,000-square-foot lots. If someone has two 2,500 by 100-foot lots side by side, they just need to get another few, a few feet, and then they could actually put a manufactured home on the property. So, it's still, it's all already zoned for that, down that area. It's just a matter of what size lots you want to allow them on.
So, right now, the gentleman that's worked three or four properties down there, what has he basically been constructing?
He is, he has been, you know, removing older homes and putting newer, but they're not brand-new manufactured homes, I think, in most cases. And that's, he has one or two lots down there that he's interested in doing that, too, but they are 5,000-square-foot parcels, and he wouldn't be able to, to do that on those parcels.
At the same point, Rich, nothing stops. I mean, I'm just saying, if you wanted to take two 5,000s and put them together at 10,000, you can put a home on it right now without changing it right?
Right, you could, you could get three, three 2,500 by 100-foot lots, and you have more than enough.
Right, but it's more difficult to find. You're going to, your amount of manufactured homes, old manufactured homes are going to be lessened when you have to try to find three 2,500s. Take it.
No, I agree, but I think.
It's going to make it small.
Sure. Like, to Richie's point, though, it's, I think it's just a density of fill question. It's not a, a style of home that you can prevent one way or another. It's just how much density you want to allow.
Right, but you can take the three, if you have two 50 by, two 2,500s, I'm saying you can, you can get that there where you, you can, without having the extra lot, you can't put the manufactured home. You could put your tiny home, which is going to make downtown look better. You can't put the manufactured home on there. It doesn't have, it doesn't have a big enough lot, so you're going to have to put a tiny home or a regular home. You're not going to get that, that repo manufactured home on there.
But if you get a repo tiny home?
You can't. I, I just think that, you know, you're spending so much money and time and effort trying to make downtown beautiful, and I think that that's going backwards.
Scott, I want to pick your brain, because I know you've got a lot of history down there.
You know, the reason that, that they're 25 by 100, or in some instances, 90 feet, is because it's such an ancient subdivision. And so, you, you, you don't have the 6,000-square-foot lot availability. So, you would essentially have to buy three lots to be able to build anything.
To put a manufactured home on.
Which, in, in my opinion, the lot owners shouldn't be penalized, because under the old subdivision rules, the lot isn't big enough now. And.
Do, do we have a lot?
I can absolutely understand both sides of the argument.
Do we have a lot of manufactured homes from?
No, there is, there's not that much down there. But, there are a few, there are a few. And, and honestly, we're talking 40 sites, building sites. I don't think tomorrow, if this passes, everybody's going to go buy a repossessed mobile and run it down there and put it on a piece of property. My, my wish is that area will develop. The reality is, is I don't think it will.
I agree, because of, of where it's sitting at.
Because simply it's on the south side of the track.
Bingo. My point, stigmatized. You got to get that out of there.
So, Richard, for, and, for another, I guess probably a lot of our concern, with a manufactured home, more than likely, the individual is going to have to have three lots to get a manufactured home on, or he can get it on, on the 5,000, if we're talking mobile home, basically what would a manufactured home is?
So, so under, if you were to just leave the ordinance the way it is, they would, again, need two lots plus at least a portion of another lot, have a large enough buildable site. And that certainly is possible down there. You know, the change is, is minor. You were talking about a difference of 1,000 square feet.
Right.
Everything else, the use, everything else is already permitted down there, so.
Is this something he can get a CUP for? And can take it on as case by case and review what they're putting on there?
I mean, you essentially, you, you could, but I'm not sure what the criteria would be. I don't know that something we'd want to, I mean, I suppose you could, but we'd have to, we'd have to have another text man in front of you, something that looked different than what, what we're proposing, but.
Is there a, a way to make an age requirement with that, or no, it's just with an age requirement or something, or no seconds or something? So, you're going to get, I just seen the things happen, but those, I understand.
I, I don't know that I would recommend a CUP process. I think it just, what size a lot is, is acceptable, is it, it is or isn't acceptable.
But every one of the lots that are up for question, just to clarify in my brain again, they are all eligible for a tiny home. So, it's not like they're a useless lot for this, anybody that owns these lots down there, they have an option, and the option is a tiny home.
Tiny home, or even a regular site-built home.
With that said, unless you guys are all done, I'm just going to go ahead and put in a motion that we not change it. We leave it as is.
Is, is this, I want to second that.
I have a motion, and a second's been made. Is there any further discussion?
Just one quick question. You'd rather see, if I'm understanding your argument correctly, 80 tiny homes instead of 40 manufactured?
Absolutely.
I think you'll have a better construction and a, and a better development as far as what the tiny homes that we sat down as a collective group and determine what the qualifications of those are. With the manufactured home, we're not putting any qualifications in. We, we can't tell them what they're, what they're putting in. And with that, I feel more comfortable having 80 tiny homes than having a whole lot of manufactured homes that are maybe not in the best of condition.
And I would also like to say, you know, as a realtor on here, hate me or love me, we have everybody, I mean, a lot of people tell us, don't take us to that area. Not that area, where the older, you know, a lot of old repos and mobile homes. Don't take us over there. That's strict orders. And I don't think, we don't, we don't want that anywhere. We don't want people saying that at all. And to build it up more, you can, you can have 40 qualified home, mobile home lots that will immediately, if not sooner, get mobile homes, old, older repos sitting there. Or you can take slow growth and get nice homes, like the gentleman Gary was saying, in Catalina and stuff like that. It's beautiful. I love it. I think it's beautiful over there. See these tiny, tiny homes all on this island. I think it's pretty, and I think that's what we're, I'm not saying that every manufactured homeowner, a lot of them take care of their property, but typically renters don't value as much the pride of, you know, give the pride of ownership that a homeowner does. I'm just saying.
That we could have this very long debate about pride of ownership in Kingman. It, it seems to me, if, if memory serves me correctly, the argument against tiny homes was, there are going to be rental units, and today, you want to.
I'd rather have that tiny homes.
You'd rather argue for them instead of against them, which I.
No, now, remember, what I'm saying is that it's a repo, they're second-moved homes.
You're assuming, which you shouldn't do, that people are going to run out and buy a repossessed home.
I'm assuming that.
And put them there. You don't know that that's what's going to happen.
That's not the fact that I brought. The fact that I brought was, I'm due in construction, the cost of bringing a manufactured home, the same size square foot, we are building them cheaper than the entire set right now. They're doing it right now. So, I'm saying that the odds of someone bringing in a manufactured home, when they can build cheaper, is rare to none. Right? Would you buy, would you buy a manufactured home versus a site-built home for less?
It just kind of depends. If I can get what I want, buying.
So, you're making that assumption that I put those where. I did not say that.
And I'm not assuming anything.
You, you did. I didn't say that. That's not what I said. I said that the, the, what's going, what's happening, and Rich already made the comment, that he's putting used, this particular investor is putting used homes down there, older, okay? So, what I'm saying is you can't get financing like you can on a regular, one-time moved home. If you bought a home from a manufacturer dealer and you set it, the financing's all there. But when you take it from another property as a, and move it to another property, the financing's not there. So, you aren't going to have homeowners down there buying those properties and they're ready to sell, is what I'm saying. The financing is not available. So, you are going to have 90% chance that it's going to be either, it's going to be 100% chance, it's either going to be a rental, or you, he's going to have to find someone with cash, knowing that they can't resell it on their financing. So, that's what we're dealing with, Mr. McCoy, and that's all I'm just trying to share, the things that we should be aware of, what may happen down there when you approve the, the, the smaller 50 by 100 lots, or putting a used manufactured home on it. That's what I'm trying to share. And it will, and manufactured homes deteriorate much faster than site-built homes. I have gone through 2003 manufactured homes. Some of them are built very good, but the, the truth is, you've talked to Sun West, the integrity of the home, when a manufactured home is moved, is not the same, and that's why lenders aren't lending on them. They're structurally compromised, they say. You can call Sun West if you want to make a motion.
I don't need to call anybody, because I'm not going to go buy a lot, but thank you for your information.
Thank you.
I think Commissioner Keith, obviously, with your professional background, you probably have more knowledge on those subjects. I, I don't question that at all. You think, though, I, and he said about people not wanting to be taken down there, and I was.
Not there. Sorry, forgive me. I meant down over, a different area that has a lot of older.
But just to chuck out, also had a realtor trying to take me around Seven Hills in Henderson, and I also said, don't take me there, but for the complete opposite reason, because I'm not going there either on the, on the flip side. So, I mean, to each their own on, on what they like or want that fits their particular area. I'm still backed a little bit what the gentleman from the public said about the, the tourism side, but I still, I just think with the way the railroad tracks come down there from the BNSF and the way that that drop-off is, it, it makes a delineation or really a separation. It's not one side of the tracks is better than the other. It just makes a, when you go down 66, a pretty good separation between the two sides. And I'm sitting here trying to think through his comments about tourism, and I, from a personal experience standpoint, I just can't bring myself to think that that's going to impact the, the, the growth and what we're trying to do on the other side with downtown. Not, I, I get it, one opinion versus another, but I, I, I'm in favor of the, I probably, a little bit more with Commissioner McCoy on this one, that I'm in favor of the infill, and I don't think, just trying to think if you're going to take that whole piece of land there and really get it to turn over, the feel for the area, or, or what's already there, and I don't think so. I don't, but I don't think it stands out. I just, I'm, I'm trying to work on my head that it stands out, and I'm not there.
Well, are we, are we really going to be able to get 80 tiny homes? Can we put one home on, on one lot?
Yeah. The, the cost of infrastructure downtown because of the hills and the rocky terrain and, and all of the angles of the slopes, the, the reality is, is it probably won't develop. I don't think it's a big deal. If you got 10 more pieces of property developed out of changing this, I think that's a bonus. I don't think it's a negative.
All right, we have a. I, I cannot open it back up once we have a motion and a second's on, open it back up to the public, or?
That's correct. Once, once this is done.
Sir, I'm sorry. We have a motion on the table and a second, and we've already discussed this out, so.
I knew you couldn't talk, sir. That's why I wanted to make those comments right then.
So, as, could we please get the motion restated so we're clarified on?
I put in a motion that we leave it as is, because the homeowners down there, the lot owners down there have options, and I think changing it at this point, leave it as is.
And I made a second.
We have a second, all righty. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner DeRees is aye. Sheriff Frederickson?
Nay.
Commissioner Goss?
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Hunsicker?
I'm a nay.
Commissioner Keith is aye. And Commissioner McCoy?
No.
Okay, so we have one, we have two nays, three nays, and three, and three ayes, so it, does it carry motion? Does it?
I'll tell you what I'm struggling with now, is I know where Commissioner Shores lands on this subject.
So, what happens is, this is, I'm sorry. So, what happens is, it's just a 3-3 tie. It's because you'd have one commission member missing. Unless you, someone wants to make another motion, we would just report this to the, to the council. It still goes forward to the council with a, essentially no, no recommendation from the county commission, unless you want to make another motion or something.
I think everybody's probably.
It's probably better to go there.
Send it as is.
That's a tough subject.
Thank you for that, Richard.
Yeah, thank you, Richard.
All right, item B, conditional use permit, KCUP 18-0004, a request from Robert E. and Judith D. Bennett, applicants and property owners for a conditional use permit to allow an expansion of a mini storage complex at 3442 Walupine Mountain Road. The subject property is zone C2 HMR, Walupine Mountain Road, design overlay district, and is five acres. The subject property is described as a portion of the northeast corridor, northeast corner of section 29, T21 North, R16 West of the G and SRM, Mojave County, Arizona. Richard?
Yes, sir. This is a conditional use permit case for the expansion of a mini storage complex at 3442 Walupine Mountain Road. Applicants, property owners are Robert and Judith Bennett. This is the area zoning map. The property itself is zone C2 HMR, right here. The eastern half of the property is already developed with mini storages. This is the portion that would be developed with the expansion. You have R140 zoning to the west, south, and east of the site, which is the Boulder Creek subdivision. You have Walupine foothills to the east, to the office here at zone C1. And then they have a vacant property to the north of Walupine Mountain Road that's a mixture of commercial and residential zoning. This is just an aerial map showing the site, again, the existing mini storages. This is where the expansion would occur, and you can see the existing residential areas surrounding the site. So, again, it's a five-acre parcel. It was originally rezoned by the county in 2000 to allow the construction of the mini storages, the original section. It was annexed into the city in 2004. The storage units were still in construction at that time. They were allowed to be completed under the county permit. Then, a year later, the C2 HMR zoning was applied to the property by the city. That did not allow many storages either by right or by, by conditional use permit. Then, in 2013, ahead of a request for a CUP, that was changed to allow many storages by CUP in the, in the district. And Mr. Bennett then applied for a CUP, which was approved. There were two one-year extensions of time that were granted in 2014 and 2016. The last extension of time was not, was, was denied in January 2017. of two thousand and seventeen. The site itself slopes gradually from the southeast to northwest. It's not located within a floodplain. There is water lines located within the surrounding streets. However, there's no sewer available. Sewer would not be required to be extended because it's with, not within five hundred feet of an existing sewer line. Property is accessed from Wallapi Mountain Road and Roslyn Drive. Wallapi Mountain Road has, is, does have curb guarding sidewalk, adjacent to the portion that is developed with the mini storages. The rest of the site just has pavement, pavement without the curb guarding sidewalk. We did post the site, sent notices to surrounding property owners. We didn't receive any comments. And there were no objections received from any city departments or outside agencies. Engineering did comment on some of the requirements that would be required at the time of development. So just, just to kind of go over the reasons for the extension of time and so on, they were granted because, under the CUP process, anytime a billing permit is required, it needs to be issued within one year of the effective date of the CUP. That did not occur in the previous years. Developer did obtain a grading permit, however, it was not acted upon, and it, it expired. So the last, excuse me, the last extension of time was granted, was not granted in January of two thousand and seventeen, as there was no immediate prospects to do the necessary construction in a timely manner. However, more recently, the applicant has submitted civil improvement plans prepared by a new civil engineer, licensed civil engineer that he has hired. The plans do include grading, Achilles, street improvements, onsite paving and parking, and also finished floor elevations of the storage units. So this is a site plan of the, of the site. Shows five new buildings with about two hundred units. There's an office, some parking areas, as well as a single driveway off of Roslyn Drive. So with any CUP, the commission is to make required findings. The first one is on applicable regulations. As I mentioned, it is C two HMR, which allows the mini storages by CUP. It's also identified on the Kingman general plans designated for community commercial lane uses, which is consistent with the C two HMR zoning. Bulk regulations, it is, this district is a, not only a zoning district, but is a design district in the sense that there are certain design requirements that necessary for any development on the site. Excuse me. Includes billing heights, dairy parapets, architectural features, unlong walls, certain setback requirements. One of the suggested requirements would be no unit doors facing the streets. And there's also standards for site height, size, and also parking. So we would, it does appear that the site plan is submitted would meet these requirements, generally speaking. Also, the traffic patterns. Street improvements are shown on this, on the site plan. Minimal traffic would be likely generated by the development. Doesn't appear that would, would radically change the traffic patterns in the area. Landscaping, again, would be, session ten of our zoning ordinance would require ten percent of the site to be landscaped. And also, section fourteen of the zoning ordinance would require a landscaped theme, and pedestrian areas to be shaded. There's also some screen requirements that would be required of any exterior equipment. Finally, doesn't appear that the property would cause a nuisance to any surrounding owners. So the decision options before you tonight are to recommend approval with the following conditions. A, all buildings shall be designed in accordance with section fourteen point nine zero zero, the Kingman zoning ordinance. B, storage unit doors would not directly face any streets. Access to the proposed mini storage units would be from one new driveway in Roslyn Drive. No additional driveway would be permitted on Wallapi Mountain Road. D, landscaping and screening would adhere to sections ten and fourteen of the zoning ordinance. Second option is to recommend approval with any commission-generated conditions. Third option is to recommend denial. Staff is recommending approval under option one with conditions A through D. Oops, no, sorry, that was the last one. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions, questions you might have. The applicants are also here this evening.
Rich, on the screening, on the screening.
Yes.
So it's under section fourteen one-two, where it has there accomplished obstructing vegetation, side obstructing fences. Do we know what the, for the new area that's gonna be encompassed? What, is it gonna be a block wall?
Well, they will be required to place a block wall between themselves and the residential property to, to the south, that is a requirement of the, of the development of the site.
Okay.
Landscaping would be, you know, surrounding the buildings.
So the backside, the one, I guess, on that picture is to the right, where that will be a block wall?
There would have to be a block wall. That's correct.
Weren't we?
Yes, we were.
Yes.
Okay. Sat through that original meeting, and there was some homeowners in the adjoining subdivision that were.
Upkeep. It was upkeep.
It was upkeep that was their concern. Am, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So we're.
Yes.
What I want to know.
Any further questions?
See the gentleman sitting down there in the, in the front?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Would the applicant like to step forward before I open it up to the, do we have any questions? Please state your name.
I'm Robert Bennett. I'm the owner of Wallapi Mountain Road, the storage, my wife and myself. Give you a quick background on this. I bought that property before it was in the city, and the storage units were being developed before it was in the, in the city. The city asked me to come into the city, and I had some reservations about doing that. The city council at that point authorized staff to negotiate with me to come into the city. The condition I had was that I'd be able to, that there would be no adverse effects to my storage complex, to my property there. They did downgrade the zoning a year later without my knowledge at that particular point. But the mayor and the city council was nice enough to do a change in the zoning to allow conditional use permit for the storage units, to accommodate their agreement with me at that particular point, to build the storage units, which I appreciate. So I have tried very, very hard to cooperate with the city wherever I can, however I can. But I still want to build the storage units.
As.
And this has been going on for a while.
Well, as, Mr. Bennett, as I believe we last spoke with you was in January of two thousand and seventeen.
Yes.
And if I can recollect, I think our issue was, at the time, you were having troubles with the financing.
Yes.
And you weren't sure on, on a contractor or the, of the plans. And that's, that's where we last left, and that's how we came to our decision. So at this point, you have the financing, and you're a go?
At this particular point, I do not have financing. What I have is property that I intend to sell when this is all approved, in Lake Havasu, to fund at least one, probably two buildings. I have had problems getting financing. There is no ifs, ands, or buts. I do not know why. That is a problem in this town, but it seems to be a problem getting that type of financing. So I would, I don't want to not tell you guys exactly what the case is. I have two properties in Lake Havasu, three properties in Lake Havasu I plan on selling. The market in Havasu is really, really strong. I anticipate I should have about seven hundred thousand dollars out of them.
So with that being said.
That will build one to two buildings.
Within a year, you would have?
I would say a year and a half, probably, maybe two years. I'll probably need another extension. So I'm gonna start, if this all works, I anticipate January, February, doing the offsites.
Yeah, I remember. I, I think when we had the discussion last time, too, was, we, I think we said, when you were ready to go forward, come back, bring in front, and we would take another look at it at that time, with the move forward. And I, Commissioner and advisor, I remember the one, there was one resident who had a complaint about upkeep. I don't think, you can open up to the public now, obviously, and see, but short of having someone else come up and, and complain in that same manner, I don't have issues with, with where it stands at this time.
Any further questions, the applicant?
So you're, you're, wait, just kind of get it right. You are coming to, to the commission again, saying, I'm ready to do this, and I'm asking for the, the permit. However, you're also coming to the commission telling us that you are going to need another extension.
I probably will, because I don't know how fast that buildings are gonna sell down in Havasu. I know my house will sell pretty fast down there, so I should have enough money for the offsites and the office building that goes up there. Whether or not, how you do it, the way the code reads is it has to be substantial completion. I don't know what substantial completion means. So if you can tell me what substantial completion means, I can keep pulling permits every, or keep doing something where I get an inspection every six months. So the way the zoning is for conditional use permit, I believe says substantial completion. What does that mean? I don't know. That's not my area of expertise.
Yeah, I'd just like to, just make a comment. I want to just tell you I understand, because it is very difficult right now to get financing on commercial. Seems like, for some reason, it's like pulling teeth. But also, I just want to say, I understand, because, you know, I understand you don't want to sell your property without getting the cut. Makes sense. Why would you sell without getting this in order? It's a proper order of things, so I just want to.
Even more than that, I, when I sell it, I have this huge capital gains problem.
Right, no.
And I need to spend the money in order to protect some of that property. So I can't rush the scenario one iota without having a huge penalty to the IRS. So it is a difficult situation.
I actually do have a question. Because it is part of the design corridor, I have heard a lot of things from the community about having a large storage facility as the gateway to the Wallapi Mountains. It's a big tourist area for us here in Kingman, and I was just wondering what kind of design criteria you had in mind to make it so that it fit in with the design corridor and encouraged tourism to go up there and not looked like just a giant storage facility.
We went through this, all of this, and the design criteria, all of the exteriors will be stucco. There will be no, I heard the comment about block walls. There is block wall in front of the, in front of the existing storage units. The existing, the new ones going up will all be built with stucco, and will meet the Wallapi Mountain Road requirements. Every bit of it will. We have elevation designs. I'd be happy to show them to you if you want to see them. Completed right there, as far as elevation. We have not got the building plans done, because most of that'll be steel buildings, and the steel companies usually do the drawings and the, all of the rest of that. But I have architectural drawings right now, already set and done, and they meet what Wallapi Mountain Road wants. And if you want to see the drawings, I'd be happy to. I got all of the civil, every one of the civil drawings done. Everything from the streets, all of the grading, everything is done on that property from an engineering standpoint. The only part that is not done is the buildings themselves, as far as how they're built.
Thank you.
No more. Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Okay.
I'll open this up to the general public. Any comments? Please state your name.
Jake Oldham. I'm a member of the Boulder Springs subdivision, Boulder Creek Estates, which lies behind the current, the current storage complex. So anyhow, I just wanted to comment in regards to this proposal. We've, we as a community, when this first started, we only had about twelve houses back then. And we've been here time and time again. We continue to oppose the, the idea of him expanding these, with all due respect to Mr. Bennett, whatever decisions and whatever deals he struck with previous city council. We would rather this storage unit not expand, for several reasons. The first is, it's a complete eyesore. And it has been, for the last five years, that I've been involved in this community. And despite coming before this committee several times myself, in conjunction with him, and then pointing out the things that need to be fixed, none of, proper signage hasn't been put up. I mean, it, things have not been done that this committee, this council had, had told him before needed to be done in order to continue a conditional use permit. So I, I have very little confidence that whatever is put up will be less of an eyesore than what we currently have, regardless of whatever architectural drawings he has in plans. Now, had, over the course of proceeding three or four times that I've been before this council, had things been changed on his part to make it less of an eyesore between then and now, then I think we could have good faith that what he will put in will be something that we will want in a rapidly expanding area of our community. I mean, that's where most of the homes are being built up in that corridor. I can speak, I, I can't officially speak for everyone in the community, but I personally know most of the member, the folks who have homes in that community, and I don't know any of them that would not oppose this if they were here tonight. Most of them have been here. We had this place packed the first time this came up. And they said, well, okay, we'll give you one more year to get this done. And then it didn't happen. And so they said, the next time, we had, the, the same folks were here, but they said, well, we'll give you one more year. And then it didn't happen. And then the next time, they didn't reinstate his conditional use permit. But at any rate, I, I think that the, it's, from a business standpoint, this is, is not necessarily good for Mr. Bennett, but I think it's good for our community to not expand these storage units. Thank you.
Thank you. No, hold on a minute, sir. Please state your name.
My name is Wes Peroni, and I live to the north of it, and I have to drive by it every day, and it doesn't bother me. And in fact, if you don't look over it, you really don't see it. It blends into the area. As I've stated a couple of years ago when we talked about this, the city needs storage. So if he builds a steel building and puts the stucco on it, I built a large forty-foot by forty-five-foot, seventeen-foot-tall building on my half acre, and I stuckled it, and it blends in, and none of my neighbors complained or anything about it. And I think it's something that the city needs. It will bring in more tax dollars to the county, and hopefully they'll share them with the city. And if he does abide by what he says he's going to do, then I, I think it should be approved and allowed to go forward. Thank you.
Any further comments? Hold on, Mrs. Bennett.
Hi. I usually don't talk, so I'm just gonna say, the other mayor that used to be up here, when they said that there was a lot of trash around there, it happened, a one-time thing. The mayor, after he came out to the property, what happened was a tenant was moving. They didn't have enough room, and they threw a baby bed and something else over the big fence. And as soon as we knew it, we got rid of it. As for everybody, as doesn't want it, I rent to so many of Boulder Creek people that love that where they're so convenient. They've all built new homes and that. They don't even want any, all their stuff, they don't want to get rid of, and they bring it to us as they want their new garage to look. So it isn't all one way or the other. And we do stay for most ninety-seven percent of time, so.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do have one other thing I'd like to say. Boulder Creek Estates, we have, Doug Engel once came in, and he said that he didn't like. Boulder Creek Estates, we have, Doug Engel once came in and he said that he didn't like it, but half of his clients become my clients. They rent storage spaces, Judith just told you. I have at least 10 people in Boulder Creek Estates renting storage units. As for the signage, I looked seriously at putting a sign on the front of the property, but the point is, I have a zero vacancy. Why would I want to go out and spend $3,000 on a lit-up sign that isn't necessary at this particular time? If you call my telephone, you would find out there is nothing vacant, not a single solitary unit. And at least, I would say minimum of 10 of those units are rented to Boulder Creek Estates people. And if anybody, if I really wanted to send letters out and get some activity for these people, I could do that in opposition to that comment that was just made. At least 10 of them are Boulder Creek people in there. Anyway.
Thank you.
For information's sake.
Thanks, sir.
Please state your name.
Good evening. My name's Bill Corey, and I live in Boulder Creek as well. And in fact, from my front door, I can see the storage facility. And I'm opposed to the expansion of that because it's going to change the nature and characteristics of the area, not only from a tourism standpoint, as you spoke to, but just the amount of traffic and the type of use that it's going to encourage. And the maintenance and upkeep has been an issue, there's no doubt about that. But, you know, the fact that he doesn't have a viable plan in place with completion dates, how long is this going to prolong it? How long is it going to, you know, be in limbo or in, somewhere in process without completion? And with the nature of the area and the value of the homes, I think it's important that we consider it highest and best use for all of property. And anything that we add should be an asset and an attribute that would enhance property values as opposed to possibly reducing them. And so that's my concern as a homeowner, and as Charmin, I'm also a realtor, and I'm concerned about property values and what they might do to them. And so that's my concern, and thank you for the opportunity.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Well, what is, what is your idea of the use? Because we have enough empty office buildings on Walupi Mountain Road. What would be the better use to you?
That's a good question, and what does the master plan say?
What does the master plan say right there? What is it?
It's acceptable use for storage units, that's what it says.
Okay.
So, I mean, there is, we have plenty of empty office buildings. We were just, you know, my, my thing is that, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I mean, he's got a plan to fill the space, and if we, we don't need any more, they got another huge building going up with already empty offices. So I mean, what is the, what is your, what would be your plan for that area?
Well, something that would contribute to the area and perhaps tourism, maybe a restaurant or something like that.
We have empty restaurants sitting right there for I don't know how long.
Well, I wouldn't argue against that because you're right, there's a lot of empty space.
No, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just getting your, your idea. I was just trying to think, like, what else would you do there? You know what I mean? That's all.
Well, we have a, there is a need for more restaurants, in my opinion, in the Kingman area. We could certainly use some more.
My question is, and I don't live very far from there, I'm thinking the storage unit was there before the Boulder Creek Estates were being developed?
I'm not sure. I've been here three years, and when I relocated from Michigan, and so, you know, it was there when I came here.
Because I know it's a fairly new area, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out.
And I understand what you're saying, I'm just saying, it's the man's property, and like, what is the better use? That's, you know, I mean, I mean, that is it, you know, we got to-
Well, I wish I had an answer to suggest on that, but I guess my concern, as with Jake's, is that, you know, property values and then changing the nature of the neighborhood, it's more of a, it's a, there's a lot of luxury homes in that neighborhood. And, you know, I, again, not only as a realtor, but more as a homeowner and property owner, I'm concerned about what may happen one way or the other with my property values there. And so that's my concern, and that's why I want to-
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for answering my question.
Any, any further questions from the public? All righty, I'll close it, open it up for discussion.
I guess I would just have to say, as I feel like I'm a resident aesthetic commenter, I, hello. I just have a really big problem with expanding a really large block of an area in our, in our design corridor. I realize that it is under our conditional use permit, it's not in our regular permitted use permit, kind of for a reason, because if you're going to have a very large, big storage facility there, I just, I really feel like that is not very welcoming to people who are, I mean, coming from other countries to come and stay in our mountains and spend time here in our town. And it's on a corridor that I, I feel like our town is trying to develop and make into something better. And, and I mean, when Commissioner Keith was talking about what other uses could there be? I mean, I could think of a million that would help. I mean, something to do with tourism would be a big one. I mean, there's no place for any of these tourist children to play. I mean, you could have a giant playground and charge money to go there. I mean, I think there's a million uses that you could have there other than just making it a, a bigger giant block. And I, I mean, honestly, I, I'm not comfortable approving a stor, a big storage unit that's going to go there without any idea of what's actually going to happen. I just feel like it's too hypothetical, and, you know, by us saying, "Okay," we could potentially end up with a giant, something that we don't even know exactly what it's going to be there sometime in the future. It's just, it's too hypothetical, and it's too not what I would consider desirable for the Walupi Mountain Design Corridor.
I, I probably would have been a little closer, I think, to what, what your comments are. If it was a brand-new, brand-new property about to start from square one, I think I'd be with you on that one. I think what I struggled with back January when this came forward last time, it was more just that there were no plans at all to, at that time, respectfully, there were no plans to move forward. But it sounds like you have a little more of a sound business plan this time around. I think you spoke last time, though, I think the one gentleman, I think if I, I could be wrong, there was a gentleman who was here last time mentioning about the, I remember the baby bed over the wall one, so that brought up a pause. I mean, that was, that was definitely a concern from upkeep to that standpoint, but I, I don't know how to block the existing use that's already there. I run up to Walupi Mountain Park a lot. I looked in Boulder Creek with ourselves before we ended up locating over closer to where Gary is, not that far away, that particular property. I don't recall that being a deterrent. At the same time, a gentleman mentioned he moved in a couple of years ago and it was already there existing, so, I don't know, I'm not, if it was brand-new, I'd probably be a no, but just incremental of what's already there, that's hard for me not to say yes on that one.
Well, if I'm not taking anybody's time, I'd just like to say that maybe they don't, I don't, he's only got a, he's only set for so many, maybe you don't need that many. Maybe you don't need to expand, maybe you make some more aesthetics, you know, of landscaping to make it appealing, maybe more to the eye, you know, some nice, because bottom line is, nothing has worked for those family fund centers so far in Kingman. They all go out of business. That restaurant on the corner up there, that coffee shop's been open four times, went out of business, Subway, you know, all these things. So storage is full. And I think that there may be a compromise, that he's only gotten, you only got, you only got the funds set up for so much, maybe you just do a little bit more beautiful, beautifying on the front, you know what I mean? Or maybe a different plan would help the homeowners and the passerbyers or whatever possibly see some beauty and some desert beauty, or maybe some cactus and some landscaping, and then maybe less storage units, you know, you don't need to pack them maybe so full or something, you know? Maybe there's a compromise.
Is it my turn? Well, first of all, there's a couple of things I want to more or less say. Rented a couple of storage units around town to include at your location, and out of all the locations I have rented, I will honestly say that as far as my items and my things that I own have stayed cleaner in your place, which tells me they were built a little bit better than some of the other ones that I have stayed at where my items were not clean at the end of pulling them out. So for that, I give you kudos. Second of all, my concerns with that is that this has already gone through one round of CUPs, and it's got put on the back burner. I do feel you are coming back to the table with a little bit more than what you had in 2017 when they did not renew. There was some other extenuating circumstances. At that time, I believe you had a problem finding an engineer, and it looks like you have found an engineer. I understand where the homeowners are coming from. I also watched this go up when we moved here years ago and watched Boulder Creek go up behind it. I know that you ran into some issues when it was annexed in from the county into the city. That was not your fault, I understand that as well. I don't see a reason to hold this back at this time because I think he has come to the plan. I do have a concern about going into this with knowing that there's going to be another extension, even though I think you have explained that away. I get concerned when we are going to go into round two of the first show, and I don't necessarily think that's a good idea for our community either. So it's, I'm, I'm torn, but I, I'm, at this point, don't feel I would hold you back.
This has been an ongoing project for years in many different councils, and promises have been made to the Bennetts. That should be kept by the city, and I would support this project, knowing full well that at some point in time, you'll get it done. My only hope is that you do it in incremental pieces and actually finish what you start before you go on and start another piece of it. And that way, it's a finished project, at least to the outside world, even though it may not be complete. I support you 100%.
I'm kind of wondering, Mr. Bennett, would it behoove you, do you have to apply for this right now? Would it behoove you when you got your funding source to come back at that time and do this process so we're not having to get extensions like we've gone through in the past? Would it be beneficial for you and everybody involved to wait till you do have your funding source?
Absolutely not. The reason why is because also I have a three-year period here in which diminished value has an effect over what happens here. The diminished value will probably come in effect in January. I am trying really hard to work with the city without getting into other problems. I could address, at different times, I get a little upset when I end up with these situations. One of them was, "What else could you do with the property?" Well, that property's zoned for 20 units per acre. I could put 20 little wee mini houses on that, I could put a slum effectively on that property, and nobody at Boulder Creek would be happy with that. I could also, if it got right down to it, do a number of other things that nobody would be happy with. I have had three storage complexes in my life, I've built three of them. Nobody has had a problem with any storage unit that I have ever built. They are, one of them in Havasu is still existing, it's 48,000 square feet. I cannot say that there will not be a problem, but January is my three-year period is up. I am trying to solve this problem with the city and being fair about it and not creating a problem for the city of Kingman. So I'm being straightforward, I'm right up here, right now, trying to get this project done, and trying to do it, and trying to solve the problem. And in 2016, you count the years, it's coming up, and I want to do the project. I didn't spend all that money for those plans for nothing. I mean, it costs a lot of money to do that. That's a really, really good project. The people, all of the residents behind Boulder Creek Estates that has used that storage have said it was a better storage. It is better because it is insulated all the way through, it has drywall inside, it has steel walls inside, it is a better construction than a normal storage complex. As for the rest of that up on the mountain, I have plans, part of that plan includes 22 RV-type storage units. There is a big demand for RV-type storage units in this town. I have a waiting list to get an RV storage to get in there. Some of it is boat storage, I got to tell you, because Kingman is ideally set up for boats. The fact is, we are 60 miles from Lake Havasu, 40 miles from Lake Mojave, and another 80 miles to Lake Need. People, this town has got so much going for it because it's situated in that position, but we also need to open our eyes to development and how we do it. It'd be nice if I could go in and just say, "Hey, bang, I got the funding and that's the way it is." The last funding that I had a problem with, it just took me so long to get the engineering done out of the engineering company that I lost my private finance. And that's just the way it is. I cannot get, I tried SBA loans, I tried all of those. People don't have a lot of faith in it. In Kingman, it's hard to do it. It's easier to do it in Havasu, I got to tell you.
All right, thank you, sir. So. May I ask, make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit, it's stated with the conditions that they're one, one A through D.
I'll second that motion.
All right, a motion's been made, it's been seconded. Any further discussion? None? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner De Vries goes aye. Sheriff Fredrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Goss?
I'm going to say no.
Commissioner Hunsicker's aye. Commissioner Keith?
Aye.
Commissioner McCoy?
Aye.
And the motion carries.
Thank you. All righty, item C, zoning ordinance text amendment case Z018-0010. The city initiated request for a text amendment to section 26.820. Portable storage containers of the zoning ordinance of the city of Kingman clarifying the conditions under which cargo containers can be used as building materials in residential zoning districts, as well as clarifying certain requirements in commercial zoning districts.
And Mr. Chairman, this is actually Sylvia's item. She stepped out just for a second, she'll be right back, so.
All right.
Just want to, I can go grab, make sure she's- She's walking out.
We just woke up, you got to refresh us.
Okay, sorry about that. Did you already read the item in? Okay, all right, so. Actually. Carpet container.
We're on the, we're on the, yeah, on the portable storage containers.
Yeah, okay.
For the text amendment.
I do a lot of that, too, take my glasses off to read.
Yeah, to look up clothes. Everything's coming up. Okay. Pitch left, okay. All right, guys.
That is, I think we got two of the. He has the flash drive.
You might have to go grab it.
Get to it right there. I don't think so.
I need your help, Richard.
They're both the same. Can we just go on to the next one? And then come back? All right.
Item D, discussion related to accessory structures and accessory dwellings. A discussion item related to possible amending the zoning ordinance to allow for larger-size allowance for detached accessory structures, garages, and allowance for accessory dwellings on lots that are mainly half-acre or greater, single-family residential zoning districts.
All righty, here we go. Let's go. So this is kind of like a two, two subjects in one. I broke it up as best as I could. We actually have an applicant here that has some interest in this as well, so he may want to speak after. Okay, so basically, the city of Kingman zoning ordinance limits the total square feet allowed for detached accessory structures to 10% of the lot size in residential zoning districts. The city of Kingman does not allow for accessory dwelling units in single-family zoning districts such as R1, RMH, and RR. Over the years, there have been several instances where a property owner has wanted to have a larger detached accessory structure, like a detached garage, recreation room, pool room, workshop, et cetera, than what is allowed by the zoning ordinance. Property owners have also wanted to build accessory dwellings, which is secondary residences to house relatives, such as an elderly parent, and have not been able to. Due to property owners wanting to have their elderly parents nearby, staff has found ways to work within the current zoning ordinance to allow, this happened by attaching some of the detached structures, like with the breezeway. So it has happened in a, in a, in a way, basically. The reality is that some of the larger detached rec rooms, pool rooms, et cetera, have probably been converted into living areas after the permit was final. And it's essentially happening. This discussion is to see if there is a way to allow for larger detached accessory structures on a lot in certain residential zoning districts with minimum lot sizes of a half-acre or greater. And it's also a discussion to see if the city is willing to allow accessory dwellings in certain residential districts with minimum lot sizes of a half-acre or greater. Currently, we have a building permit on hold for a proposed 3,600-square-foot detached RV garage storage room in an R120 residential zoning district that cannot be approved due to the proposed size being more than what the zoning ordinance allows. The current maximum size allowance in the R120 zoning district is 10% of the lot area. And in this case, the lot is 21,393 square feet. And so the maximum size of a detached accessory structure allowed is 2,139. Currently, there is an existing single-family residence that is 1,444 square feet. And if the proposed 3,600-square-foot detached RV garage room was attached to the house, the maximum building size allowed by the floor ratio is 50%. So this floor ratio would allow for basically 10,695 square foot of building on this half-acre lot. But this is, we're using this as an example to what's going on right now and we have this permit on hold. So this is what is showing. This address is actually 3837 North Eagle Rock Road, where they have longer lots, basically. We have an existing dwelling here and this is where the proposed detached RV garage storage room will be located. And then here's just an aerial kind of showing again where it would be located. Right now, our accessory building allowance is, this is where we have the statement here that accessory buildings in aggregate may not occupy over 10% of the lot area. And then here, I'm talking about R120 and R140 more so because this is where we've typically been getting the requests are in those zoning districts. But this shows how much floor area can be covered on a lot. In the RR zoning district, they do not have a maximum allowance for accessory structures, but they do have a maximum floor ratio of .25 for all buildings on the lot. I did do some comparison. I highlighted the points, like sizes in this case. The city of Lake Havasu does not have a maximum detached accessory structure limitation. The overall maximum lot coverage cannot be greater than 50% in zoning districts with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet or greater. There is no maximum lot coverage for lots that are one acre or greater. And then the city of Bullhead, the square footage of accessory buildings and structures in single-family residential districts shall not exceed the livable area by more than 50%. And then the total square footage of all buildings and structures on a lot shall not exceed the maximum lot coverage percentage, which is mainly 50% for the larger lots. These are a couple of the cities that I highlighted, but randomly checking other cities, it seemed like a majority of them mainly went by the total floor ratio. Here are a few options. We could raise the allowable percentage of accessory buildings allowed in single-family residential districts with a minimum lot size of, say, 20,000 square feet or greater, so your half-acre or greater lots. Remove the 10% allowance for detached accessory structures and use the maximum floor area ratio of .50 for R120 and .45 for R140, and then it's .25 in RR of the lot area for all buildings. Could remove the 10% allowance for detached accessory structures and base the allowable accessory structure size to be 50% greater than the primary residence livable floor area. But with this, you kind of need to be a little careful because you don't always know what size the primary residence is going to be. So that would be more flexible. You can leave the zoning ordinance as is. Accessory buildings in aggregate may not occupy over 10% of the lot area in the residential zone districts. Okay, so this is, I know it's light on mine. It looks like, so this was supposed to be some photos of accessory dwellings. If my next slide is there. Okay, so here's an example of like a situation where we've had a very large garage, basically 5,351 square feet. And originally, they would have liked it detached, but because of this nice little breezeway here, it's attached. So then it does fit the total floor area ratio. These are just merely examples of other situations where the breezeways basically have made these additions allowable that would otherwise be detached. So this part is actually about accessory dwellings. That first part was more focused on the size of detached accessory structures, but these kind of go hand in hand. The most common inquiry from property owners wanting accessory dwellings has been from those, like I said, that own half-acre or greater lots. Staff has approved several building permits for rec rooms, this is kind of what I said, pool rooms, detached garages, and workshops that could possibly be removed later after the builder permit was final. We did have that one rezoned item that came to us over, I think it's been at least a year ago, where the property owner originally wanted an accessory dwelling, but because we didn't have the allowance, they rezoned their property and basically ended it with two R120s. The allowance for accessory dwellings at least would require the building to meet the building code versus being built as a rec or pool room. Accessory dwellings would be taxed as living area versus accessory structures. The permit fees would be higher for living area. And so this discussion related to accessory dwellings should be considered at the same time that we review the maximum size allowance for accessory structures. Okay, there's my other slide. Okay, so this, this was just another example of like a pool room that was built some time ago that really could be like a small living area or. And here's a comparison between Lake Havasu and city of Bullhead. And this is mainly the size that I did comparison with. In Havasu, a maximum of one accessory dwelling unit is allowed for parcel. The use shall be a minimum of 400 square feet in area and a maximum of 1,000 square feet in area, or 50% of the living area of the primary structure, whichever is less. The city of Lake Havasu does not have a maximum detached accessory structure size limitation. The overall maximum lot coverage cannot be greater than 50% in zoning districts with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet or greater. And then there is no maximum lot coverage for lots that are one acre or greater. In the city of Bullhead, the square footage of accessory buildings and structures in single-family residential districts shall not exceed the livable area, floor area by more than 50%. The square footage of structures which meet all of the following criteria, attached, unincluded in roof, shall not be included in the calculation for accessory buildings and structures. And the total square footage of all buildings and structures on a lot shall not exceed the maximum lot coverage percentage, which is mainly 50% for the larger lots. And here's some options. We could revise the current allowance to allow one accessory dwelling in certain residential zoning districts with a minimum lot size of half-acre or one acre or greater. Add a maximum size of the accessory dwelling, and these are just some choices, like base it on the current allowance that in the aggregate of 10% of the total lot can be used for accessory structures and include accessory dwellings. Base it on the total floor ratio for all buildings on a lot. Base it on the size of the primary residence or customize a size that, like other cities did, that would work for the city of Kingman. Or we could leave the zoning ordinance as is, which does not allow for accessory dwellings in any single-family residential zone districts. So here's some of the questions to answer. Does the Planning and Zoning Commission want to revise the current maximum size allowance for accessory structures, which is currently 10% of the lot? If so, what does the commission want to revise the maximum size allowance to? Does the Planning and Zoning Commission want to revise the zoning ordinance to allow for accessory dwelling units in certain single-family residential zoning districts with a minimum lot size of half-acre or one acre, such as R140, R120, RMH40, RMH20, and RR? If so, what does the commission want to allow the maximum size of an accessory dwelling to be, or shall it be based on the floor ratio of all buildings on a lot? And if so, what additional restrictions does the commission want to place on the allowance of accessory dwellings? The developments, appearance, or criteria would apply. And then another, so, does the Planning and Zoning Commission desire for the allowance of accessory dwellings to be allowed outright by the zoning ordinance or by a conditional use permit process? This is supposed to be it right here. So the Planning and Zoning Commission is asked to review this report and you can ask staff to bring back more research, take no further action, or make a motion to draft a text amendment to zoning ordinance related to any of the topics. And then as a reminder, the applicant who has a building permit on hold, Mr. Nagel, is here to answer any questions related to his situation.
Any questions of Sylvia?
Think about the single garage sitting off on a lot by itself, which we ran into how long ago. I have, I want to start with one, one question. And that is, a year ago, we had this in another area where they divided the property in half and built this. By doing this, we aren't going to allow them to separate housing out and create an opportunity to sell it off as a partial property, you know, or split the land at that point. Are we opening that Pandora's box or are we keeping that part of the box closed and saying yes, you know, you put a mother-in-law quarters in or however you want to phrase that?
I would think no, because it's accessory.
Okay, so it maintains its accessory.
Correct. It would be accessory. And then when I think about it, if you had an R140 lot, say, and it was already more than an acre, I don't know, maybe two acres, just randomly going to say something, and somebody wanted to do the same thing, they could, they could rezone something and have two lots to meet the zoning still. So in effect, that could still probably happen.
Could still happen.
Mm-hmm. But we are trying to do accessory, like you said. Typically, I'm thinking this out as we go, too. And typically, so when you're saying specifically accessory, then we're usually referring to one primary residence per lot. So it wouldn't be one primary and then one accessory on this other lot if they had split it.
Because a person with a half-acre isn't going to feel to rezone. I think that, I think the couple that came here last year was on an acre or two acres and that's.
Off of Pasadena.
Yep, yep.
Correct. Chairman, they were on one acre and went down to a half acre.
Yeah. So the dwelling, the second portion that you presented, the accessory dwelling portion, that is creating a specific definition for accessory dwelling and rules around a dwelling versus just an accessory structure, correct?
Correct, yes.
Any further questions of Sylvia?
I have one question. If we did say that you could have an accessory structure that you lived in, could you technically create like a tiny home in your backyard and then rent it out as like an extra source of income?
Commissioner, so what I think with that is that that probably technically can happen even now with renting of rooms. But when we're doing the accessory dwelling units, you can always put like a requirement that it should be rented to relatives as such, but if it's 100% able to make sure that that never happens, I couldn't say that because I'm just being kind of realistic as far as seeing that happen in other areas. But the goal would be to be for relatives.
I can answer that. You have to have R2 zone to legally have a second residence collecting rental income. So they'd be breaking already zoning requirements. Wish people break those all the time, but I'm just saying.
I think we're, yeah, I think we're in an age of having to take care of family members or parents or, you know, insurance is going up, nursing homes are taking everything they have and care is maybe not always there. So as a family member that's faced it herself, I understand why people want to go in this direction. I just think that, thinking it all the way through, when you are moving your aging parents into a residence close to you, to have them close by, they might as well be 100 miles away because as they age, the care of them becomes so intense that you literally need to be under one roof. So it makes me concerned that when that aging relative passes, are we faced with, what do I do with that little house out back? You know, and that's, that's my fear. And I think we start out with good intentions, but it, those are short, short-term things and I want to make sure we cover ourselves on that front.
Commissioner, so the one thing we could put into the requirements, you know, is say that the accessory dwelling should be used for relatives. But then, as you know, the enforcement of it.
Is going to be difficult.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
More discussion.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Thank you.
Open this up to the public. Any questions, comments? Please state your name.
My name is John Nagel. I live at the 3837 Eagle Rock Road. I was looking at this as mainly, I'm kind of the same point you guys are at. I'd like to keep everything that everyone has kind of inside. I see this brand-new neighborhood I live in. It's really nice. I love the neighborhood. It's a great, great area, but no one can put everything inside. That's kind of what I'm trying to accomplish. More than accessory building, I have, I don't have yet, but I have a few cars, I have motorcycle, I have some things. I like to be inside instead of having, I see a neighbor right down the street's got seven cars in the backyard already. And it's like, if we could allow to put a building, we allow you to put that inside, that's kind of what I'm trying to accomplish. So I just want to let you guys know my intention was that. I do have an autistic son and he's going to be a lifetime, he's going to live with me forever. And I would love to have him have some independence to go in the back, but I don't mind him staying in my house. So I don't think that'll ever happen, but that's my intention for what I wanted to do. I wanted to keep it, you know, keep, keep everything. cars in the backyard already. And it's like, if we could allow to put a building, we allow you to put that inside, that's kind of what I'm trying to accomplish. So I just want to let you guys know, my intention was that. I do have an autistic son, and he's going to be a lifetime, he's going to live with me forever. And, and I would love to have him have some independence to go in the back, but I don't mind him staying in my house. So I don't think that'll ever happen, but that's my intention for what I wanted to do. I wanted to keep it, you know, keep, keep everything nice and neat. I want the resort look in the backyard, you know, always look really nice. So that's my idea, to keep it, that was the whole idea for this whole thing, so.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Now I guess no further comments, so close, off to the public and discussion amongst.
Yeah, I think for me, trying to make sure to keep the two subjects separate, even though they're presented together. One is this gentleman's situation, which is a structured building. And I don't, I mean, some of those ones, I appreciate everything you're saying about trying to keep things aesthetically pretty and nice and looking that way. So the fact that your primary house is fifteen hundred square feet, and you've got a larger RV or boat or stuff you want to put back there, so requires a bigger building, I'm not, I'm not, I don't see why that's a problem. I don't, that fifty percent of total lot space, the one that's, same one Havasu, same as Bullhead on that subject, which I think is basically number, option number two.
Option two.
I have no problem with that at all. I don't, I don't see why that's, so that, I'm, I fell on that one. The dwelling one, uh, I don't know, I think I'm, I'm okay with it, too. I mean, I know what you're saying about a place being and what to do then once that situation passes on, but I don't know that there, there's other people are going to have that situation coming up, so there's other people looking for that. So I don't know that having that set up is bad. I believe you're correct, that the people are living longer and having more care, so that's coming that way. But the other one that comes to mind, which I think Los Angeles is doing a lot of, and actually the one I know here in town who has a rental situation that's probably not properly zoned, what he's doing with it, but he's renting to K R M C nurses and short-term people that come through, and it's in a very nice neighborhood and not had any issues with it yet. But I think that's the other thing that could come, that not only do you have the aging population side, but then you have the growing healthcare services part to take care, help assist with taking care of it. So I think there's opportunity there for that type of one, and I don't think that that's a bad element in any way to be drawing in, providing an opportunity for that type of, of situation to exist in the community. So I, I, I'm not sure which option yet of the ones that Sylvia presented on the dwelling side, but I think that the, the breezeway thing, I mean, it's just, I mean, that's ridiculous. I, I get why people do it as a workaround, but I think that's ridiculous to force someone to have to do that, to attach a little five-foot roof up top there just for the pure sake of, now it's no longer accessory. So I don't, I don't think forcing people to do that makes a lot of sense, so.
One thing ahead then, that little breezeway that you're talking about, I'm trying to use, utilize the whole half-acre lot, so my building would actually be in the back. My breezeway would have to be a hundred and twenty-five feet long.
I'm good. Yeah, I don't.
I was going to put it all the way in the back, so it's a pretty long breezeway. So I just want to let you know.
I support you on that one. I don't think that, I don't, I don't like forcing people to do the breezeway, I think so. But on the accessory dwelling, I'm not, I'm, I'm good with doing something there, moving forward in some manner on it.
Well, so the, the action before us is, do we want to bring, have more research brought back for a public hearing? Do we want to take no action, or make a motion for staff to draft a text amendment to, to the zoning ordinance related to any of the topics above? That's what's before us, so.
I, I'm good on making a motion in the first half, I'm not sure on the second half yet. I, I'm good moving forward, I just.
Can I help clarify anything on the second? I mean, how about, do we want to allow the first part for an accessory dwelling in zoning districts with half acre or greater? That would be your R1, 20, and 40, RMH20 and 40, and residential. That, that part we're okay with. Okay, so this is where I was kind of stuck myself, though. What, what size allowance do you want to use? Now, so with our accessory, detached accessory buildings, we're okay with going with the floor area ratio. And, and this is kind of similar, but we have the extra part of the living area being involved. So we can limit the living area, or we can just keep it under the same floor area ratio. We've seen where they've based the accessory dwelling fifty percent, greater or less, I think it went both ways, than the primary. But like I said, in that case, it will fluctuate, you know, based on what the primary size is. So I felt like that was kind of inconsistent as well.
Yeah, I guess, I'm not so sure that I, I'd probably be okay with both, both of them being on that fifty percent.
Like the living area portion?
Because there's lots, I mean, everybody's different. I mean, my, I was not there yet with my mother, but we've had that discussion along the times, and, you know, if it was her mother, you'd have to have a mansion back there for a living. You know, so, and the primary and the secondary would flip-flop in that scenario.
Which one is it? Yeah, that could happen.
But no, I, I think I'd be okay with both scenarios at the fifty percent, but I do like the idea of creating that specific sep, separate definition that you brought up, just so we can.
Separate, like, create a definition.
That way if there's a problem, I don't know, if we get something wrong here and there's a problem, it's probably easier to adjust.
I would agree with you on that one.
Okay, and to avoid further split of that, yeah, okay. So really, those were the, the main two things to decide for accessory dwelling, was how big and if we want to try that.
That's a, Commissioner McQuaff. So if we are narrowing down that route, do we need to make a motion for you to draft that as a text amendment, and then next?
Yes.
Next time, okay.
Yes. Yep, and those were, those, you would make the motion for the one for option two, and then what you wanted to see on accessory dwellings.
Okay. So I, I'm okay, I'll make a motion that we change the accessory structure current limit to the fifty percent of lot coverage on the halves and the point four or five on the, on the full acre, and then that same size for the, for the accessory dwelling, but also creating that separate definition for accessory dwelling.
Okay.
Is that clear?
Okay.
Okay.
We need a second or something. That was pretty good.
So we have a motion.
That was his motion? I think that was his motion.
Correct.
And second.
We have a second. All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded, and any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That's easy.
Simple.
For a little longer.
Okay, do you want to, do we want to go back to the text amendment?
Yes, please.
All right. Zoning ordinance text amendment, case Z018-0010. The city initiated request for a text amendment to section 26820, portable storage containers that are zoning ordinance in the city of Kingman, clarifying, clarifying the conditions under which cargo containers can be used as building materials in residential zoning districts, as well as clarifying certain requirements in commercial zoning districts.
All right, thank you, here it is. Okay, so one, one final round of this.
Did you say final?
She did say final.
Yeah, I hope so. Okay, so this, going to review for those that haven't heard before. So the city of Kingman zoning ordinance does not allow for cargo containers to be used for storage in residential zoning districts. And over the past year, there have been several instances where a property owner wanted to use a cargo container for storage on the residentially-zoned property and could not. The zoning ordinance currently allows for cargo containers to be repurposed and used as building material in all zoning districts other than for storage. Due to the increase of public interest to use cargo storages for storage in residential zoning districts, staff was requested to present a discussion item to the Planning and Zoning Commission. This discussion has occurred since May 2018. Previous discussions related to cargo container allowances in the city of Kingman have been presented to the commission in 2014 and 2016. And here's our current allowance, that we allow cargo containers to be used for building materials except for storage at this plate, at this point. The options presented at the August fourteenth, 2018 commission meeting, staff presented these following options to the commission that addressed what public was, the public was requesting and what the commission was considering. Option one was to allow cargo containers for storage in the RR zoning district. Option two was to allow cargo containers for storage in the RR, R140, and RMH40 zoning districts in areas annexed prior to 1989. And three was do not change the current allowance that cargo containers can only be used as building materials in any residential zoning district. We did have a public workshop and survey on September fifth, 2018. Planning and zoning staff, along with the building department staff, held a public workshop. A paper survey was distributed to those who attended the workshop that provided possible options to consider related to the use of cargo containers for storage in residential zoning districts. An online survey was also provided for those who could not attend the workshop, and approximately thirty-seven people responded as of September eleventh, 2018. The results of that survey was option two and three were about equal. On September eleventh, the Planning and Zoning Commission was presented with the results of the community feedback from the workshop and the survey. Commission had voted to initiate the text amendment to various sections in the city of Kingman zoning ordinance and move forward with option three with some clarification, but do not change the current allowance that cargo containers can be repurposed and used as building materials for structures, including storage, in any residential zoning district, and to further clarify. Oh, we're going to further clarify the current allowance of cargo containers in residential and commercial. The proposed text amendment would continue to allow for cargo containers to be repurposed and used as building material in all zoning districts. The text will be amended to include the allowed use of cargo containers for storage, subject to the requirements of the building code and the development appearance criteria, which is exterior building materials and roof requirements. A building permit will be required for all cargo containers used as building materials, regardless of size. And then for our commercial zoning district, the proposed text amendment will also add some clarification to the existing language related to the allowed use of cargo containers in commercial zoning districts as follows. We'll add the exterior of a storage container may be modified to match the principal building. This may be achieved through the use of paint, stucco, siding, and other approved building materials. We're going to add storage containers shall not occupy required off-street parking, loading, or landscaping areas. And then we'll also be adding a definition as follows. It says cargo container, which is also known as intermodal shipping containers, six-sided steel-framed unit designed as a general cargo container used for the transport of goods and materials, also commonly referred to as shipping containers. If this text amendment is approved by council, those who currently have cargo containers on their property in residential zoning districts that do not meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance will have to remove their cargo containers or come into compliance. And here's the recommendation, I recommend amending sections 2.0 and 26.820 to establish a definition of and clarification of the regulations for cargo containers in residential and commercial zoning districts. That's, that's it, that's all you have. The commission can make me bring more researchers. No, we're going back to the first slide. If you have any questions, though, that's all I have tonight.
I think we beat this to a bloody pulp.
Yeah, yep.
I think we're good, Sylvia.
Somebody wants to be funny and give me one more question, right?
No.
Sylvia, I have a question for you.
You have to.
Are you over it?
I'm so, so over it. So we need basically a motion and second to move forward with it.
If I do.
You won't have to, you won't have to get made before.
Ask for a motion?
Make a motion to accept the, the text amendment is drafted.
I second that.
I have a motion, a motion's been seconded, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner DeReese was aye.
Yep.
Commissioner Rickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Goss?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunsicker was aye. Commissioner Keith?
Yes.
And Commissioner McCoy?
No.
Okay, the motion carries five to one.
All righty, thank you. Item E, discussion regarding single-family residential designs. The Planning and Zoning Commission has asked staff to research methods to achieve a variety of building elevations for new residential structures so that neighboring, neighboring homes do not look exactly the same. Planning staff has researched several cities to understand how they address this issue. Richard.
One more item for tonight. So we began this discussion back in June, if you recall. Sylvia brought this item in front of you, and Chairman's, has been interested in addressing this for several months. Staff has been asked to research message, methods to achieve a variety of building elevations for new residential structures so that, as you said, neighboring homes do not look exactly the same. So currently in our zoning ordinance, we do have exterior appearance criteria that's applied to all single-family dwellings and accessory structures. And this includes minimum requirements for floor area, building widths, pitch, and requirements for garages and carports, among other things. However, this section does not address requirements for variations in floor plans, building elevations, how they, how they look, material choices or color schemes for single-family dwellings. And currently, we have homes being built in both newly-recorded subdivisions as well as older infill areas of, of Kingman. Just to look at the number of permits being issued, first half of twenty-eight, twenty-eighteen, we did a hundred and sixty-four permits issued that compares to a hundred and two the previous year, so it's definitely increasing in all areas of town. Infill and development, older subdivisions is, is really less problematic for this issue because you have different builders, building a variety of architectural styles on different lots, and they're not typically side by side. The so-called cookie cutter effect for new homes is more common in subdivisions with a single developer, limited number of floor plans, and few, if any, custom-built homes. Developers have a tendency to use the same model home plans, paint schemes, and landscape designs within their subdivision due to cost efficiency and mass production. So that's what we're trying to avoid doing. I think Sylvia told me this is actually in China, but if you take away the trees, it could be Phoenix or Las Vegas. What we're trying to achieve is a variety of architectural styles that adds character and interest to a neighborhood. So staff researched the approach that three other cities took to address the issue. Peoria, which is down the Phoenix area, adopted design review standards which address a variety of elements, and not just the residential areas, but also the commercial areas. They, and they also address architectural form. They require a minimum number of different standard plans to be submitted to the city for approval in subdivisions, and the number of plans is, is based upon a number range that falls within, depending on the, on the number of lots within a subdivision. Also, there's a minimum number of roof styles, materials, and colors that are required based on the number of lots in a subdivision. They also have requirement that no more than two adjacent lots can share the same standard plan and building elevation. Wickenburg has adopted design standards for new homes in subdivisions of twenty lots or more located within single-family districts, as well as individual lots that are of twelve thousand square feet or less. Standards are incorporated into the zoning ordinance. There's a minimum of four house plans at three elevations per house plan exhibiting a different architectural style that's required. And they also require staggered, staggered front setbacks, so the garage isn't necessarily always the front thing, front of the, of the house. And the same house plan elevation is not permitted on adjacent lots. Finally, Eloy, which is a town between Costa Gran and Tucson, has adopted architectural guidelines in its subdivision ordinance. The guidelines are applied to new subdivisions where builders intend to use standard plans rather than develop custom homes on lots. The standard plans must be submitted for approval by the city after the final plan is approved, but prior to any building permits being issued by the city. Design guidelines vary somewhat based on the residential densities of the subdivision. A minimum of four floor plans with three distinctly different elevations for each floor plan is required in, in these tract home subdivisions. Also, three colors of roof material, three styles of garage doors, and three exterior paint colors are required to promote architectural diversity in their neighborhoods. So this is just a sort of hard and fast review of, of a few cities and towns. We didn't do a real extensive review, just trying to get an idea of, of how some other areas handle it. Some cities also just develop guidelines rather than ordinances to deal with it and look for voluntary compliance. So the planning commission has asked to, to review this information. You may take no further action this time. They'd ask us to bring back more research for further discussion. One idea that Sylvia and I talked about is, is maybe arranging a, a meeting with some of the more active builders in town, and planning staff and perhaps one or two commission members to discuss the issue before taking further action, to see maybe what voluntary compliance we can, we can get out of that. So with that, I'll turn it over to you for discussion.
Yeah, I like that, that idea three.
I do, too.
Because, I mean, you could, we could ask you to do a million tons of research for it, but probably where you end up is going to be the first word, and number three is going to be where some of that input's important. some of that input's important to come from. So it's probably better to put that cart after the horse on that one, go that route, at least get a framework narrowed in.
Yep, I agree.
Where is this a problem?
It's been mostly in the newer subdivisions where you have a single developer.
Like off of Airway, I'd say like Sage and Apache and all them. You just got straight, same home.
Southern Vista.
Yeah. It's not that common. I mean, it's not huge.
Right behind the North Safeway.
Not a huge problem.
Whatever that subdivision.
Yeah, but those.
Keno.
Wallack Ranch, yeah. Those are kind of different a little bit.
We really only have a couple of builders that I would put in this category, whether they're a single subdivider or developer, and they're building, you know, a few different floor plans. There's just a few in town. We don't have any national builders in town yet, so it wouldn't be a big task. Could bring a few of them into a meeting and just...
Because, yeah, we don't even have, really hardly any subdivisions that I know of that have one builder. So you can't, you're not supposed to take somebody else's floor plans. So I was just wondering, like, and I have a question for you on that. So if a builder is going to, do they bring the plans already done, and then you would say, go back with your plans and change it up? I mean, how would that all take place? Or would they come in, would that be for, I mean, with what we're trying to accomplish, it would be for a developer, builder doing a public report because he's doing a large subdivision?
Well, I mean, one approach would be, you know, and like I said, we only have a couple of builders in town that do full subdivisions. Engle Homes is the most obvious one. Cantrell does, I think, mostly Wallack Ranch area and legacy Wallack Ranch. George Fris Ranch or Fris Development has built, historically, in neighborhoods, and he's been kind of a single builder. But we don't have too many examples of that.
Right.
But the way it may, it could work is that we would have some type of review of the plans and have some sort of numbers based upon numbers of lots in the area, kind of like maybe what Eloy did.
A little bit more.
And they would just have to be approved ahead of time. Standard plans, it's pretty common to have those. The building department gets those all the time. And once they're approved, they know which standard plan is approved, and the approval process is super quick as opposed to reviewing a brand-new plan that they've never seen before.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, we don't really have a problem too much of it right now. But, and I noticed it's really bad outside of the city. When you get over to, off of, it's not in the city, that we have a major problem.
Where?
Outside of the city. You have that, like, over on Rusty Spur and stuff. It's like you walk, you're driving down. And over in Chaparral Mesa, you're driving down the exact home, almost to the T. Maybe if you're lucky, they flipped the door, you know, the doors on the side of, you know, but I was just saying, so I can understand how that could be.
I think in the boom in the last round, in the early 2000s, there were some construction out of Vegas in areas that were starting to put up that cookie cutter effect here. Is that kind of what this is lingering from, is to prevent that in the future now that we're starting to pick up the building sequence again? I totally get it. You go into Henderson and around the Vegas area, and you get into some of those subdivisions, and the next thing you know is like, what street am I on? And all of these houses look the same. I understand both sides of that. As a community, you're looking at it going, change it up. As a builder, somebody who's got that money invested into those subdivisions, they're going to try to do this as efficiently and cost-effectively as possible. So there is two sides of that sword. And I think with option number three, it gives us an opportunity to be a voice for the community, as well as hear the voice of the builder to come up with a viable solution that meets partway.
Thank you, Rich.
So we need a motion on that, or just?
Direction staff.
I think is everybody in favor to go with, opening up the public?
My name is Ken Works. I live in Yucca at 2250 Crystal Springs Road. I came here mostly to listen to the storage container problem. But I know it's a lot easier to repair a roof if all the shingles are the same size. And I think that's the reason they have these cookie cutter-designed houses, is because you could mass produce by cutting all the shapes of the lumber in a warehouse and bringing them out to the site. They don't have to be tailor-made for each application. I think it really adds to the cost when you consider not wanting the houses to all look the same and have different elevations and such. It seems to me like it's greatly adding to the cost. I'd just like you to take that into consideration. I don't really have a horse in this race, but I just think it's a suggestion that ought to be considered. Thank you.
Do you say your name?
What was your name again?
Ken Works.
Ken, thank you.
Ken Marks.
Works.
Works.
Thank you, sir. Please state your name.
It's Gary Waters. I'll be brief. I know it's late. Just, I know we're talking about preventing duplication of buildings, which is noble, you know, it's a good idea. I'd like to see the inverse while you're doing these studies for like someplace like downtown and trying to get some of the new construction conforming to certain standards. I've seen studies done on like the city of Paris or Missoula, Montana, where they take photos of the architectural features and basically create like a photo album book that they can provide to builders and developers of certain features that should actually be repeated, is try and make the buildings conform. This isn't just some one-off aesthetic desire on my behalf. There's actually a principle of conformity and appraising, where if you have buildings that are similar, you know, not identical, but similar, you actually derive more value from that. And you can see that in value, you know, when you actually do mass appraisal. So if you consider restricting some of the construction in downtown to where it looks something like neighboring properties, and I don't mean what we've talked about earlier with just, you know, making these new additions look like the existing structure. I mean, making the new proposed structures look like some of the buildings around it. That might be a worthwhile study before we actually get more influx of development downtown. So anyway, I appreciate the work you're doing on.
Thank you. So everybody's in agreement just to do with number three?
Yeah, I'm good with three. I think he had some good comments, though, too, about it not getting, it's probably hitting the balance. A little bit of variety, but still, I like the word conformity there as well.
Question, is there any particular commissioners that would like to be involved?
I'm happy to be there.
I believe this was your idea.
I would be there as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. All right, item five, announcements by commission members. Limited to announcements, availability, or attendance at conferences and seminars. Requests for agenda items for future meetings and requests for reports from staff. No discussion on any of these items.
I have an announcement. Just want to remind the public that next week, Wednesday, the 17th, is our annual Walk Away From Drugs event. It is a free event. It's in Tenon Park. There are three starting points. One is Miss Parking Lot, another is Mother Road Harley-Davidson, and the final one is Firefighters Park. We converge onto the park at the same time. So because there are different walking lengths, we try to get it so that we're all coming into the park at the same time. There's free food. There's a lot of information on Public Safety Expo, as well as events and just knowledge out there. Knowledge is power, and we have a drug epidemic sweeping our nation, and Kingman is not exempt from it. Trust me, it's not. The 17th. So everybody get out there, walk for a cause, and enjoy an evening out with everybody in our community.
Sylvia, I know you and I had this discussion, and I've seen this in my many excursions throughout this city. I guess we have an ordinance, but no permitting process for accessories, portable, call them storage sheds or whatnot. I don't know if we could get a study or facts, because I notice a lot of people aren't complying with the ordinances that we have on the books now. And if we could come up with some, maybe to resolve this open problem that's going on.
I have one. I believe November 13 is going to be the date, the second Tuesday, for the next meeting. And if that's the case, for the first time in two years, I'm going to miss that one.
Okay.
And then are we, are Commissioner De Vries and I up?
19. You got another year.
Is it one more year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Nice try.
Oh, well, I gotta be moving, so I just tried to...
Any further comments?
One more announcement this Friday at 5:00 PM at Locomotive Park is a meeting with Parks and Rec and anybody in the city that is interested in attending. It's the Christmas light concept for lighting Locomotive Park completely. So you're all welcome to attend and bring lights.
I want to second that one, Mr. McCoy. It's a very, very good project going down there and really do something for our city.
Yeah, I think Kingman will be on the map with Locomotive Park Hall.
And the stars. Any further comments?
Friday night, this Friday, 5:00.
May I have a motion for adjournment?
I motion to adjourn.
I have a second.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?